Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of July 24, 2017. We're having a special meeting regarding the Brisbane Baylands, and we'll start it off by calling the meeting to order, and if you would, please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Item three, adoption of agenda. Is there a motion?
Move adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Old business. Item A, Brisbane Baylands Planning Applications, Baylands Concept Plans, Brisbane Baylands Specific Plan, Case SP-01-06, General Plan Amendment, Cases GP-01-06, GP-01-10, and Related Final Environmental Impact Report, Universal Paragon Corporation applicant. And we'll start off with a response to council data requests and questions. I just want to, first of all, thank city staff for doing such a thorough job in answering our questions. You gave us a lot of reading material for tonight's meeting, but that was very much appreciated, all the detail. And so, there's no formal staff report tonight. We'll just jump right into questions, and based on the, you know, answers that we received to our questions. So, who would like to go first?
Questions to the questions.
I mean, actually, I mean, you know, I do have a lot, so I'd rather, you know, like, maybe go a little bit later, just in case some of those questions are already asked. But there is one question that I'd like to start off with.
Oh, sure.
Before the other council members go into it. And that is, so, we had a Baylands Subcommittee meeting last week, and we had a couple of the interns, Avi and, oh, was it, Daniel, give presentations on some of the information that they had gathered. There's, you know, some word around town that the interns are the ones that gathered the information and wrote the answers to the questions, and I think before we even start, we need to just kind of clarify that that wasn't the case, and if you could just set the record straight.
Sure. Well, you know, each summer, we have usually two or three interns from various universities in the area. These two are from Cal Berkeley, and they're involved in political science and urban studies and urban planning, and so this was kind of a nice fit for them to come in this summer when we were going through this process. So, we did have them work on a few of the questions in terms of research, and that was what was presented to the Subcommittee last week. The vast majority of the questions that you see the answers to tonight were put together by city staff and our consultant Lloyd Zola, and the information that was put together by the interns was actually embedded in here. It was actually embedded by Lloyd and through his process, so that we made sure that, you know, the information was accurate and appropriate. So, and I would say that the interns worked on maybe, maybe 10 questions out of, how many are in your packet tonight? 150, 160? So, they worked on a small amount, but their role was really more just doing some research, and thought they frankly did a very good job, and I thought the presentation to the Subcommittee last week was very, very good.
Yeah, we thought they were excellent. Yeah, it was really good.
So, if that's the case, would you like to, you or another member of the Subcommittee like to give a report on what you heard in that, or is that?
It'll come up through the questions.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, would anyone like to start off, if you have any questions to the staff report?
Um.
Terry?
I sort of wrote some questions throughout the entire packet and then all of the questions that were asked, and one of the things that council member Conway asked was, can the city limit housing to the Baylands to temporary lodging? And I'm wondering what that would even mean? Does that, like, a residence hotel that only can be used by sponsoring employees or sponsoring employers for their employees? And would that be something that is, you know, maximum at 30 days? Or what does temporary lodgings?
Maybe I should explain it. Okay. What I was asking the question is from the thought of that if we're doing hotels, in lieu of hotels that we know aren't going to work there, that to delve down into the question of, what I was asking is if it can be employer-employee type of barracks, or, you know, whatever you want to call it, dormitory, that would be workforce housing for workers only, not their families, workers, who would travel to the site, work their workweek, stay in these places, and then at the end of the week or end of their workweek, then they would traverse back home to wherever they live? And I find it that, the reason I'm asking that is, I think that that would, A, be more effective type of housing, you know, for the workforce or something like that. And so, that's, without going much further into it, because I could go deeper into it, but then, you know, I could save that for August 7th, but I could have also talked about this two weeks ago, or two meetings ago. Is that about summing up, John, what I was?
So, it would be more of a residential hotel-type barracks?
Yeah, yes, similar. Take, you know, and there's numerous facets to it, okay? And I say I'll lay those out when we get into the land use on August 7th. Unless you want to go tonight, I can go tonight. I can go right now.
You know, one of the things I was thinking, I mean, we have all these questions.
Yeah.
And, you know, and really, they're, some of like what you're talking about are more like suggestions and flushing those things out. You know, it might be helpful, once we, you know, get information from staff or, you know, and talk amongst ourselves, is that something that we're interested in at least looking into?
That would-
So, that we can kind of build that foundation. Right now, we don't really have that foundation, but these questions kind of are kind of providing an indicator of things that are important to us.
It's a land use, basically, as it would be kind of a part-
I just want a description.
Yeah.
So, can I follow up on that question? Do you mean like how Facebook and Google are looking at, you know, building housing for their workers? Or are you talking about like the trade workers that are going to be in the area doing the actual development? Have you thought about those two different things? What, like, what type of workers did you have in mind?
I won't-
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Well, okay. I wasn't saying just pertain to the site necessarily either, but we kind of draw a circumference that it would be either workers who work on-site or-
Okay.
-current employers-
So, won't working-
-who have a need for it.
Yeah.
And they could either, you know, have a consortium of employee, employers who have a need, or something like, something along those lines, so.
Okay, so it's not workers who are, like, working to build the site? It's like, you know, just workforce housing in general, is what you're saying?
It could be, but it's temporary housing, more like a hotel or a-
More of a barracks-type thing, you know, that, you know, that we could probably use, since it's more of a transit, you know, we could use a transit occupancy tax type of vehicle. Not to get into it, but there you go.
Okay, okay.
John, anything else to add?
This is, from a land use standpoint, the criteria, as I understood it, was basically that it would be non-permanent residents versus temporary workers, and whether you define temporary workers as a certain geographic area or time of number of days a week or month or whatever. That was really the land use question, temporary people who aren't using that as a permanent place of residence versus people who are there on a temporary basis in support of their employment. That was the land use question we answered.
Do we have any examples of that type of housing?
Well, it's kind of a, kind of a new model, really. You know, we can define new models.
Clark Conway.
I mean, it definitely speaks to the challenges-
I don't have the original idea in my head. I mean, there's our examples out there, and-
Isn't that-
I think they have one in San Francisco, but-
Isn't that sort of like when our police force can spend the night here because they're working a shift that's back-to-back, or, you know, how the fire department stays on-site, and their shifts have been co-mingled or can-
Similar.
Brought together.
Kind of similar.
So, that it provides housing for a temporary use, but not their full-on regular housing.
Well, everything had to be new at some point, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, there's no reason why we can't investigate that.
Okay. Terry, do you have any other questions?
That answer it?
Yeah.
Terry?
That answers that question, and it was just on the first page, so I just, I mean, like I said, I've got sort of comments throughout this, and I just didn't know what, how we wanted to arrange it and go through all of my questions, or just piggyback on other?
Well, I was thinking person by person, unless you, I thought that would be the most efficient use, because then, you can certainly ask more questions later if they come up, but then everybody gets a turn, and it's more organized. So, I thought, yeah, the way we normally do it, everybody asks their questions, turn by turn.
But, you know, like you were saying, I mean, you know, I had, you know, I thought the questions that you had, well, actually, the questions that everyone had raised, I thought were excellent, and I thought that the questions that everyone raised were excellent. You know, we all come from, you know, different perspectives, you know, I mean, so there are things that were asked, and it's like, oh, yeah, you know, that was really good, I should have included, you know, and, but that's why you have a body of five.
We asked some similar questions.
We did, you know, for sure. And so, you know, I'd like to be able to, you know, like, if you-
Piggyback.
-get a certain question, yeah.
Of course, of course.
Definitely piggyback.
Yeah, I think we should piggyback.
So, perhaps we should just go through in the order that the questions are presented.
Okay.
And have our comments on those, and that way we get something that's more cohesive than following-
Okay, we can do that.
You know, a person through the whole thing, and then go back and reiterate-
That's a good idea.
-the same kind of information.
Yeah, let's do that. So, we'll go page by page.
The only reason I started it was I didn't understand what-
Okay.
-the answer was, or even what the question was on to.
Well, you know, just shoot out my humble opinion, too, if I could, before we get into that, that we have to ask ourselves, is this going to one way or another keep you from establishing a land use? You know, in my mind, no, because a lot of this stuff, once we establish a land use, and I think Lloyd and John have said this throughout, throughout the hearings, that we establish land use, then we delve into more of the nitty-gritty. We're kind of sitting on the outside of the surface, you know, scratching around, trying to get answers on stuff, but some of this stuff is only going to be delved into if it's necessary.
It might be irrelevant.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm, I, you know-
So, I mean, I don't need these long, drawn-out answers and then questions to the question to the question, where it just goes on and on and on, is, maybe we establish a land use, then we can dig down into it.
I, I think it's appropriate, because what you don't know is that Clay and I had a conversation kind of about this earlier today, and I think it might be appropriate to kind of talk about that now, since that's really, I think Clark's taking the conversation there. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
I do not.
Yeah, I did talk with Clay about it.
Oh, you did too.
And I was going to go through the questions first, but if you want to bring it up now, that's fine.
Well, I think that, basically, Clay and I were talking, and, you know, for me, this is something that I really want to put on the ballot, and for me, it's cut and dry, you know? Do you want housing, or do you not want housing? And I think it's really difficult for us to talk about other land uses until we know where our community is at after listening to all of the hearings, because I think that if the community comes back and says they want it or they don't want it, that will inform what happens with the rest of the plan, especially if there ends up being housing and you want to have kind of the retail intermingled to come up with a plan, like One Planet Living or whatever. So, I just, you know, I think that the time is kind of dwindling down for us to get that on the election in November, and I think time is of the essence for us to really just lay it out and see where we all are, so we can see about putting it on the ballot ASAP, because all of us have made, a lot of us have made this commitment that we would like to put this on the ballot. And for me, my decision is really, I know how my gut, what my gut feeling is, and I would be happy to discuss that tonight, actually. I've thought a lot about this, and Clark's right. There's not a whole lot that can come back that's really going to change my mind, and I doubt there's a lot of things that are going to change your mind either, because we've really been looking at this for over a year, and we've had ample time to think about it. So, to me, I just, I think it makes sense for us to all kind of say where we are and talk about getting this on the ballot and what exactly that's going to say, because for me, ultimately, that really, that's what makes a difference for me. All of this just is important, but what the voters tell me is the most important. That's it.
No, I hear what you're saying. You know, I, some of it I agree with you, you know, and some I don't. You're right. I mean, the big, or one of the big issues, maybe it is the biggest issue, is housing, over remediating the site. There's, there's different types of housing. There's how many units, you know, is acceptable, and, you know, I don't, you know, personally, I don't feel this council has flushed out what its vision is, and, you know, there's this, this, I think, rush to try and get to an end game, that we've gathered up this information now, we've submitted our questions. Personally, I like to see us, you know, develop a solid foundation for where we all stand, and who knows? Maybe, you know, getting through it like that, we might realize that we agree more than what we think we agree less on. You know, there are, you know, got this stuff here from, you know, Bay Area, the planned Bay Area. We know that we're under the microscope. We know that decisions that we're going to make, you know, people on the outside are going to be very interested in what we do. We know that we have a unique site. We could put forth something because, hey, damn it, we're going to do it, and there are consequences with every decision that we make. So, if we're going to make a decision, we better make sure that we really, you know, went through all of the, you know, all the nooks and crannies, and we dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. You know, would we, you know, if we put forth a position, you know, who knows? Maybe there would be a situation where the Baylands would be taken away from us, and is that something that we're okay with? You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of unknowns that I think we need to really, you know, hash out amongst ourselves with staff, our city attorney, rather than just, okay, the clock is ticking, we've got a short window, we better put it on the ballot. I think that of all the time we put into this, I think it would do a disservice to all this time that we've applied to this project.
I have a response to that, but I think it's important for everyone else to talk first.
Yeah. Clark?
I've always respected the people's right to vote on, on land, major land issues in Brisbane, you know? I was wanting to initiate the resolution to do the vote on the quarry in 1999, which was a binding vote at the time, and I also said we'd vote on the Baylands, but I'm not sure what we'd be voting on right, right at the moment. You know what I mean? I think that we have to establish something first, and then, at that point, you know, we'd go through having something of substance to take to the ballot, whether, you know, community supports it or not. If I'm hearing you correctly, what you're asking is just one item, which is the housing, should we take that to the ballot? I'm not clear on that, but it sounds like-
So, to me, step one to get clarification on the next steps is just getting a pulse from the community on whether they want housing or not, because we could spend a ton of time coming up with our ideal plan, put that on the ballot, and then people might say, well, you know, I really love this plan, but I don't like these few things, and so then they're in this conundrum of, well, do I vote for it or do I not? Because I like some of it, but I don't like other parts of it, and so I think that it could muddy the waters in actually really getting solid feedback from the community on where they stand on that issue, because fundamentally, I think it's not how we're necessarily going to lay it out that is the argument. It's, you know, is it right for housing, or is it not right for housing? So, it's not like I don't want to do all of that work. I do. I just want to make sure it's, we're not, just like Clark says, I don't want to ask, answer all of these questions, that might be a moot point. I don't want to spend all this time coming up with a plan and then take it to the voters, and the voters may be frustrated or confused, because they might like some of it and not others, and we might not really get direct feedback about the thing that we really want to know about.
Yeah, you know, if I may, you know, I'm, I don't, I don't, there's, there are these different steps that we need to take, and before you can have a plan, you have to have, you know, an understanding of what are your values, right? What's your vision? And I don't think that we've gotten there yet.
You, let me stop you there, Cliff, if I could. Do you have a vision for it? Because I have a vision for it.
I have a vision for it.
Okay.
Oh, I know, but we don't have a council vision, right? And that's different.
But that's the land use that we discussed. Well, I mean, that's the part that we go through.
So-
I mean, we can sit there and talk about all the data in the world, but if you have a vision, we lay that out, and it doesn't make a darn what it is.
So, say, for example, right, you know, we could all agree that we have a major concern about traffic, right? We don't want, you know, and I know that was quite a few of your questions. Well, you know, to understand how you deal with the traffic, it's like, okay, well, if you, you could have one model where, okay, don't do any real intense use out of the site, and you want to have people driving there. You could have another model where, okay, let's have a very robust public transportation plan, and then that, you know, and, you know, reducing parking, you know, having these different modes of transportation. We also know that there's going to be massive development in San Francisco, and that's going to spill over into our city. How are we going to, to deal with that? We, you know, we can't just, you know, ignore it, right? We, you know, so, we know through lots of information that if you can get people out of their cars, that's going to drastically reduce the amount of traffic.
But Cliff, you're getting into the weeds right now, when we need to say, okay, this is, this is what a vision of land use, if everybody goes through it, and we should probably start with housing.
I'm ready.
We probably should start right out with housing and discuss it, because if there's three or four people, or all five of us agree that we should or shouldn't have housing, then, then we're going one way or another, right?
Okay.
This way or that way.
So, I just want to allow Terry to-
Okay, no, no, I hear you, Clark.
From that point-
Before we get into that-
You know what, let's go with that, right? And then we can start talking about, you know, what, you know, you make this, you take out this one piece, because, and then how that affects then the other pieces.
Yeah.
Right? And, okay, I'm cool with that.
So, I'd like everyone to have a chance to respond to Madison, so Terry, why don't you?
So, I think that we do need to get the elephant out of the room on housing or no housing, and if we're going to look at the Planning Commission recommendation of what they spent a lot of time preparing, and we're going to look at the developers' proposals that they've spent a lot of time preparing, and we need, I believe, as a council, to come to a decision, and that may be a consensus, it may be not a consensus, but we need to come to a three-person majority on if we want to start at the basics of the Planning Commission recommendation, draft a, what we're comfortable with, and what we are looking to accomplish, and our vision for the city of Brisbane and the Baylands. And then, that is what we should put to the voters if they agree with what we come up with at that point. But I think it needs to be fleshed out more than housing or no housing. I think it needs, although I think that is the one thing that we need to start off right here, and we started that, and I answered the question, and then we stopped, because we decided that there was other questions that needed to be asked before we could get to, are we starting at one of those five steps that the consultant has brought forward to us with box one through five, from denying the plan to accepting the developer's plan, and the five boxes in between, or the five total boxes? And I think we need to tick off that box and say, I'd like to start with X, Y, or Z, and for me, that would be starting with the Planning Commission plan with no housing, and working from there to get the correct land use and the correct general plan amendments that we can then bring, and I think the general plan amendments should be what goes to the voters, saying, should we change our general plan to allow X, Y, Z, whatever our vision is? But what's also a consideration, if we get to- But what's also a consideration, if we get to box one through five with our vision, we need to step back and ask the developer if they are even interested. Because that's one of the things that we've heard from the community, is that they want something that is feasible and possible and beneficial to us, but the developer cares if it's beneficial to him. And if we don't have some sort of buy-in or agreement, then the rest of the process is completely moot.
Nothing different.
Because, because if the developer says, no way, we could spend all this time making a utopia that will never happen.
You know, I mean, you're making an assumption there. I think if you put forth the Planning Commission's recommendation, that is something that a developer definitely would not, because he's already said that. So again, you know, I, you know, if you want to start with the Planning Commission's recommendation, I mean, look, Madison put forth something about housing. It's like, okay, are we going to talk about housing or are we going to, you know, now take a different tack?
I want to talk about housing.
Let's stay focused, okay? So this was.
You know what? I'm talking, okay? Thank you very much, Michelle. You know, this is a council discussion here. She, she mentioned something. Okay.
Right. Terry, I just, I'm, I'm looking specifically for your response to Madison's question or suggestion about putting housing on the ballot in November. And what I'm hearing is.
I don't think we should rush to put it on the ballot in November. I don't think that it's that time critical. But I think that we need to, as a council, start with the recommendation that came from our subcommittee, from our, from Lloyd Zola, which asked us, where are we starting? On what box are we starting? And I said what box I wanted to start, and then we disintegrated on that evening to a whole different realm. So I would think we need to start there, and I think that we need to bring something a little more substantive to the voters than just housing or no housing. Although if that's what the council wants to bring forward, I'm happy to start there, but then we wouldn't have anything to work on until December, when those results came in. And I think that we owe it to the public to show where, to be the leaders and say where we feel. And we could be, like I said, it, it, it couldn't be quite a split vote, could be a split vote, I suppose, on where we start and whether we want to include housing. And I think that's where we need to start.
Okay.
I, I agree with everything you say, except for one thing. And starting with the Planning Commission's recommendation, I think we should deal with the developer-sponsored plan first. And I would be more than happy to start when that time comes. If it's tonight, I'll start it.
Okay. All right. So to respond to Madison, you know, I, and just to reflect the council consensus, I think I agree with my colleagues that we're not ready to put it up to a vote in November. It's more nuanced than just, do we want housing or do we not? And, you know, like Terry said, we need to be the leaders. And I, I know that you're looking to the voters, and, you know, since you've got on the council, you've been very responsive to the voters. And, you know, I'm sure that they appreciate that. But I think that this is such a complex issue that we can't just put it out there, yes or no. Because elections, you know, campaigns, they're, they can be very complex. And I, I can see that, you know, there would be campaigns, you know, anti or in favor of housing, and people might not get the full picture, the way that we have it. And, you know, I think we definitely want to hear what the, the voters think, but I think we need to come up with a proposal first and then put forth some options for them to consider, and then take that back as an advisory vote. Because, you know, I know the easy thing would be to say, voters, tell me what you think, and I'll do it. But, you know, I feel really strongly that we need to be, you know, not just leaders locally, but leaders regionally. And so everyone's voice is important, not just the people who vote in our city. So that's just one piece of the puzzle. And so I, I would not be in favor of putting that black and white issue to the voters in November.
So, you know, I'm fine to flush it out more. I'm just concerned about, about complicating it to the point that it, it actually, we're not getting a clear, I mean, if we're actually wanting to get their opinion to mean something, to actually inform of, inform a decision of us, it, we have to be getting a sense back from that vote of the direction they want us to take. So if we put the plan in front, do you like this plan, yes or no? If they say no, well, it's hard for us to determine what parts of the plan don't you like. So this isn't a survey, right? It's a vote. So I just want to make sure that if that's the step that you want to take, that's fine. Whatever goes to a vote has to be very clear coming back to us, how they, I think it's important to understand how they feel on that issue. So I don't know how we want to word it later, but I don't want to send something to them where we get back results where it's hard to determine what they like or don't like about it. What do you change? You don't, it, it, you know, if you get something back and people aren't in favor, it's hard to determine what parts they're not in favor of, because now you have a huge plan. There could be multiple different things that people like or don't like. So that is my concern. So we're not, we're not in agreement, but I, I just would like us to make a commitment that whatever we send to voters, it's clear that with the way, with the way that they vote, we're going to, it's going to give us some sort of direction that we can go off of.
Okay. Cliff?
Well, you know, I, I know we've said that, that we have our goals, we have our vision. And I, and I'll, I'll just be honest with, with, really with all four of you, I, I really don't know what, what direction you want to go. I, I, I really don't. And, and it, and it's frustrating to be able to, to move forward when there's lack of, of clarity. And so, and so I thought tonight's meeting was, we're going to go through these questions so we can understand what are our concerns? You know, maybe if, if you could remediate the site to a certain degree, that might change your mind. If, I mean, there's this, it's so, it is just so complex. And, but yet, you know, we just keep kind of digging in and trying to get to the end without really establishing a very solid beginning for this council. We, like you said, Terry, we, we've already had a lot of time with the Planning Commission, and there are recommendations. But, you know, one of the things that you said about, you know, that, well, the developer might not like it, you know? If we have a vision for the site and we can back it up, I really don't care if the developer doesn't like it. And then that's the fight that you have. And, and that's why you have development agreements, so that you can then, you know, work those issues out. You're not expected, expecting to agree on everything, just like we're not expecting ourselves to agree on everything.
That's why we establish a land use. That's, that's the first part. We can sit there and go through all this data and stuff. Is that going to, it, it doesn't sway me one way or the other on, on land use right now, at this point, Cliff.
Okay.
I know what I want to do.
Okay.
And, and if everybody has a vision here to lay it out, and if it matches up on some things, great. If it doesn't, I want to start with the developer-sponsored plan. And we either start tonight, or we can wait until August 7th. I'm, I'm ready to go. I was ready a long time.
I think to simplify it, I think we should just say if we want to have housing or not. Because I think that's really the starting point, even before looking at a plan.
Yeah, all right, whatever.
Fine with that.
You know?
Okay, who wants to take this hot potato first?
Hmm?
So who, are we okay with discussing that?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'll go first. First of all, you know, I, I've, I've listened to arguments in favor for and favor of. We're going to, we're going to start on this now, you guys. We're jumping to August 7th, okay? So staff, have any problem with that?
Um, I'm not sure that the, that the agenda item, if we're going to start getting specifics of talking about either the developer's proposed plan or the Planning Commission's recommendation, I'm not sure that the, that the agenda materials would have given the public adequate notice that the council is going to get into that type of discussion tonight. If, if the council feels that it doesn't need to go into any depth with respect to the questions out there, and simply indicates that it's intending to take up land use, as it indicated it's going to on August 7th, and, and begin that discussion, I think that would be more appropriate. Certainly in the, in your discussion tonight, if you want to, you know, kind of give your continued vision of what's out there, I think that's fine. But I don't think we should, the council should get into specifics of starting to, you know, deal with the merits of either the developer's plan or the Planning Commission's plan or something in between. I think that the, the agenda needs to reflect that more adequately, because I think there might be more folks who might want to come down and have a chance to comment on what the council says.
Can we at least state where we are on land use so that for August 7th, we kind of already know what's going down?
I don't see a problem with that. I just don't want the council to get into the merits then of the pros and cons of, of that.
I will say against that.
Can you define that further, please?
Don't give your.
How could you say something without explaining this?
Well, that's what lawyers try to do. I, I think there are certainly various elements of the land use plan that have been before you. And I don't see a difficulty with the council indicating that it might have a, a preference toward one or the other, or some combination. Because I think that's part of the council's vision of what, of what it wants to see out there. And certainly that was part of the agenda materials last time, and I think it's within the ambit of what's on, on the agenda tonight. It would give the public an opportunity, who's here, to then comment on those comments that the council makes about its vision. But I think that's a step, one step removed from then discussing in particular the, the developer's plan, for example, or proposal, or the Planning Commission's recommendation. I think we would want to identify that the council intends to discuss those items and identify that on the agenda so that the, the public knows the council is really starting to head in that direction toward a potential decision, because I think that would impact who's out in, in the audience and who might want to show up. I hope that is a more of a clarification.
It is, but, you know, I, I'm not sure I, I actually agree with that, Michael. I mean, in a sense, because, you know, we've been dealing with baylands planning application. So just because we're saying, well, you know, we got this stuff, okay, I'm good with it, you know, I'm, I'm ready to move forward, what's the difference?
Yeah, we talked about the ballot issue, and that wasn't on the.
Yeah, that wasn't on here, so, yeah.
The ballot issue was simply whether.
I don't think your microphone, I think you turned it off.
Yeah. I think the ballot issue was simply whether the council had an interest in doing that. If the council did, then we would have brought back something to you on August 7th for you to consider in terms of what that would look like and, and the wording, et cetera. And I guess all I'm saying is that I don't want the council to go too far in its discussions/ deliberations tonight where someone either pro or, or against whatever the council may come up with would say, well, if I would have known they were going to talk about that, then I would have wanted to come down and be heard before, you know, at this meeting. So I think, you know, I just want to be cautionary.
Then, then there's nothing more to talk about tonight, unless people want some more. I mean, given that, because once two or three of us, or, you know, even all five of us, I mean, we got the, a serial decision, one way or the other. So what you're saying is, don't say anything tonight.
I, I would, ideally, I would, I would prefer that, because again, the, the agenda items really dealt with us providing answers to as many questions as we could. And, and with the idea being that August 7th was going to get into land use, which would certainly be within the ambit or certainly within the discussion about the land use plan that the developers put forth, or the land use plan the Planning Commission has recommended. I just think that you may be right. If there's nothing further to talk about tonight, then there's nothing further to talk about tonight. And that's, that's a final, I mean, that's a decision the council can reach.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm.
Madam Mayor, we, we had a recommendation to go through the different questions. If there's nothing to, if there's nothing to talk about as we go through them, then we won't talk about it. You know, I mean, you're entitled to, to, to talk about these different things, Clark, if you want to. So I think we should just go through, through it like we have agendized it, and if, if it benefits us in the end, hey, that's great. And if we get nothing out of it, so be it.
Okay.
Well, you know, I, I read everything. I read through it and actually talked to staff today, and she made some suggestions, so that, that was, you know.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Um, sure, we can take a little public comment here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Tony Varios, I just wanted to ask whether, I had heard that there were about 150 questions posed. I don't know if that's accurate, but whatever the correct number is, wasn't any of them asking whether it was housing or no housing? Thank you.
We can't ask staff that.
Right. So I, but I.
There were numerous housing questions in there.
Yeah, and, and the agenda states response to data requests and questions. So I think if the response involves one of the questions that was answered regarding housing, I, I would think that's within our purview to discuss that. You can bring that up as a, as a comment. So who would like to go first?
We're just going in.
So we're going, I'm sorry, so we'll go in order. So we'll start with, so we're looking at attachment one. Starts on page three. That's when the questions begin, unless somebody had a question on the first page. So are there any questions on page three, attachment one?
Already asked mine.
Yeah, you know what? I just want to just get clarification from staff, unless you want to ask it, Clark, on your first question? In regards to the amount of square footage that's currently at Sierra Point?
No, I, I, I read the chart.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm glad that, that you did ask, ask for that chart. So, I mean, so we have the, the total amount of, of square footage, including South San Francisco. If the hotel is built, it'd be about three, three million square feet?
Hotel's not included, I don't think, square footage-wise.
Correct. We didn't have a estimated square footage for the 700-room hotel.
Okay, so the three million square feet number that excludes the hotel. Okay. And then the total amount of acres between South San Francisco and, and Brisbane is 119? Okay. And then what is the, the total square footage amount of the baylands that is buildable, not, not excluding the lagoon approximately?
It's about 540 upland acres.
540, okay.
That would exclude areas that are unbuildable, like Ice House Hill, but the gross acreage is about 540 upland acres.
Okay, all right. You know, I just have a, a question of our council. Does anyone think that Sierra Point is overbuilt? Or, you know, I mean, is that, is that an appropriate amount of, of square footage for that site? Or we think, oh, no, that's, that's, that's way too much?
I'm not willing to answer that until August 7th.
Okay, all right.
All right, moving on to page four. Jump in if you have any questions. Page five.
So, so Madison, you, you're cool not asking, you know, any response back from, from staff regarding your questions?
What?
Do you have any questions in response?
Oh, I have questions about my questions, but they're not on this, these pages.
Okay. Okay, I mean, because right now, we're, we're starting with your, your questions.
I know.
Okay, all right.
It's not on these pages.
Okay, so page five, page six.
Page five, I have a question about item two.
Okay.
In this first bullet point, expanding transit services as far as roadway and highway capacity. Currently, Caltrain's appears to be at capacity. BRT and. be at capacity, BRT and Muni also, and the BRT and Muni are really only concerned with the east-west transit. Is that the case, that they're at capacity?
They are, I think in a lot of cases, close to capacity on a number of the screen lines in a number of directions.
Okay.
But when we say expand capacity, or expand transit service, that includes expanding capacity to accept more riders.
And then on the question number four, when it was asked about time for pile driving, I had one question, and when we built the overpass for our tunnel, they had to do night pile driving, because it was too close to the Caltrain line to do daytime driving, because it interrupts train traffic. And I was wondering if the staff knew what the closeness to the train tracks would be, that would necessitate off-hour pile driving? What's the radius for that? Do we know?
Ma'am, my recollection was that those piles were the piles that were within the JPP's right-of-way.
So only within their right-of-way? So would the buffer or the overpasses that would be needed for Geneva extension, or to make the buffer zones for sound, and the not need to be within their right-of-way?
I would certainly expect that some of the piles, some of the structural system for the Geneva Avenue overpass, would need to be within the JPP right-of-way, so that would most likely fall under those non-fair hours restrictions that Caltrain has previously imposed.
Okay, and do you know how wide their right-of-way is?
I believe it's 100 feet, ma'am, but I'm working off of a 16-year-old memory on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some questions in regard to pile driving. So, in the question, you know, in the response, there are some mitigation techniques, such as pre-drilling of piles and the use of more than one pile driver to shorten the total pile-driving duration. So how does that work into reducing the noise impacts?
Well, the noise impact comes from essentially hammering, and, you know, it's like taking a peg in a hole and hammering the peg in. If you can pre-drill the hole, it makes it simpler to get the pile down, and so there's less dropping of weight down.
Okay, so can the city council require the pre-drilling of the holes? I mean, is there like a, I mean, I'm not an expert in it, so I can't say all of them, or maybe we can, but it seems to me, you know, when we had the bridge being built over the tracks, that was a major concern at that time, and then it's a major concern of people today, of, well, here you have this large development, and all you're going to hear are these, you know, it's the pounding.
Yeah, I mean, the mitigation measure can be expanded to do more quiet techniques, such as the pre-drilling, and it really depends on what is the total extent of buildings, infrastructure, how much pile-driving needs to be done, where, over what period of time, what kinds of construction would be going on at the same time. But I think the simple answer is yes, we could craft a mitigation measure that would reduce the length of time that pile-driving occurs. We can limit the timing in a day, number of days per week, as well as institute requirements on technique to reduce the overall noise.
Okay, all right. And I know that distance also has an effect on the impacts, so the distance from a residential area, like a current residential area in Brisbane, is much farther than where the train bridge is. But then again, we also have folks that are in other parts of the area in San Francisco.
I think in the way that noise carries in Brisbane, that difference in distance is not going to be very noticeable. The basic concept of noise is 6 decibels reduction with doubling of distance, so we're not talking anywhere close to doubling of distances. I wouldn't rely on distance as a means of assuming that's going to be less noisy.
So you think we'd have like a pile-driving plan?
That would have to be done as part of the noise mitigation that we would talk about. How and where would pile-driving be done, what techniques, what times of day, so on.
Okay. So, moving on to page six. Any questions there? Page seven.
I have a question in the center of the first, well, the second really, really long paragraph. There's a number there that doesn't make sense of 17,999,4000. What digits should be removed?
Let's call it 18 million, just short of 18 million square feet. So there would be 17,994,000.
Okay, take out a nine.
Good catch. Okay. Anything else? Page eight.
You know, I do have a question going back to page seven, and, you know, it's in relation to Terry's question. So, I mean, here are these 22 projects in Brisbane, in San Francisco, in Daly City, and South San Francisco. You know, we're looking at close to 40,000 units. I mean, that's a significant amount of housing development. And of course, you know, you talked about the 18 million square feet of non-residential. A little bit, you know, the next, the second sentence after that one says, "It should be noted that not all cumulative significant impacts can be reduced to below a level of significance." So, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, that's difficult when you're trying to plan in an appropriate way, you know, you're trying to reduce the impacts, but, I mean, there are these other cities, and they're doing their thing, and it's hard to plan, you know, for these other cities that are developing around you.
And we make that statement because when you look at 39, just about 40,000 residential units, 18 million square feet, 2,000 hotel rooms, that is a huge mass. And when you add it all up and put it all together under SEQA, you can throw every mitigation measure you can think of, and every feasible mitigation measure, but given some of the constraints that are faced, traffic, air quality, the noise of construction, and a lot of other things, all the mitigation measures that would be available are not going to reduce that mass altogether to a less-than-significant level.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else on page seven?
You know, there was one other one. So Madison talked about the insurance that covers earthquakes, sea-level rise, severe storms, tree roots, allowing people to live on toxic land, you know, talking about like insurance policies. The last sentence in the response was typically property owners would pay the cost for such insurance, and I'm assuming that the question was asked is so that the city is not liable for these things. But I don't know. So that's my question, is that, you know, I don't want the city to be liable for these things. There are mechanisms, insurance mechanisms, that we can instill. Is it in the development agreement, or is it in the conditions of approval that would make the city be harmless of liability for these issues?
I think the question liability is a city attorney question, but my take would be the liability question is separate from insurance.
And that question was raised, and there's an answer to it. I'm looking for, oh, here it is. It's on page 76 and 77 in the materials, talking about the liability for the city for future problems regarding earthquakes and sea-level rise on the development. And without reading a page and a half of information, I think the answer is there, that the city would not have liability because of the process that's in place to review these matters, and therefore there's immunity that would apply.
Okay, thank you.
Was your question, though, who would pay, what mechanism would we have in place for who pays for the insurance?
So, you know, I asked a similar question, and I read the response, so I probably won't address it later, but, yeah.
All right. Moving on, page eight.
This was one of Madison's follow-ups to some of the questions that have been, the public's been asking about cancer studies on landfills, and I did find it interesting that the response was that increased risk of cancer with an estimated excess risk of 3.5 percent, and higher for specific cancers, forms such as non-Hodgkin's lymphoma and soft-tissue sarcoma than for other cancers. So I think that was an interesting response, that the cancer rate does go up for people living close to toxic areas.
Okay, but I mean, I also read information where it stated that the risks are not increased if there's, say, a Title 27 closure, if the site, the area that's contaminated is remediated properly, that those risks are significantly reduced. So am I wrong with that, Lloyd? I mean, I don't want, you know, I want to make sure that we get the right information out there.
Yeah, and what I'll say is, in relation to this one, this was Dr. Murns who put this together, this response. I think it would be better, you know, I can take back those questions to her and have her respond. I think that would be more appropriate than me trying to respond as to the technical nature of these studies.
Can I follow up on that? I asked a really similar question at the end of my questions that I was going to talk about, but I can just address it here. So the reports that you gave us were super dense, for only having a few days to read them. So it was a little difficult for me to extrapolate exactly, you know, what it was communicating. So I guess what I was looking for was examples of, examples of unregulated fills that have been, that housing has been developed on, and then corresponding asthma, cancer, birth weight data for those places. And I wasn't necessarily looking for it in like a nice packaged-up report, where somebody had already done all of that work. What I was looking for is just, okay, here is the site, here is the health data that corresponds with this site, and then I could compare that with national averages. So, yeah, I kind of was like, what, Terry and Cliff, it was kind of hard to determine the outcome if it was really, had an impact or didn't. So I just didn't know if you could highlight some more things out of the study, or just come back with some of that information. It doesn't have to be, like I said, in a fancy report altogether in one spot. You could just give me the site, and then give me the data, and then I could compare on my own. It just was like difficult to understand exactly what was being said. Does it sound like, you know, it could make a difference, it could not make a difference?
Yeah, we could come back...
I was a little confused.
We could come back with some simple conclusions from those reports. The one thing I did want to point out is, in that first paragraph under question 12, the 3.5 percent of increased cancer risk refers to populations within 3 kilometers of old incinerators. So that's not landfills in general.
Right. So what I'm looking for, too, is really developments that have been around for a long time, because I think it's really easy to say, "Oh, well, we've built at Mission Bay, or we've built here, we built there, and everything's great, everything's good." I think you really don't start seeing trends in populations until, and can even do any sort of correlating until you have years of data, until you have people, a population that's living on a place, in a place for a long time. So that's why I'm hoping to get data from places that, you know, have had a population on them for a while, and to see if there's anything that corresponds, and compare that with, you know, the national averages. So that's kind of what I'm looking for. I don't know, is that clear?
Yeah, we'll see what we can find in terms of that. One thing to keep in mind, as we're comparing developments that were put in place a long time ago, is what you'll be comparing is the technology that existed to close a landfill 20, 30 years ago compared to the way it would be closed today. So as long as we keep that in mind in that comparison, we'll put together what we can.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else on page eight? Page nine?
So, perhaps on page nine, when we were talking about liquefaction risks, and it's, in the last paragraph, talks about the Marina District was severely impacted by Loma Prieta earthquake, and that it was constructed of landfill comprised of mud, sand, and rubble from the 1906 earthquake. Aren't, isn't the rail side of our, of the Baylands constructed with rubble from similar types of operations?
Yeah, there are areas that are filled in with some of the same rubble.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to follow up with that. I mean, you know, Karen used to live out at the Marina, and her unit was badly damaged, as well as a lot of other units out there. But the Marina District, when was that built? I mean, it was right after the 1914 Expo, or 1960, whatever it was?
Yeah, I don't know the timing of the Marina District, but again, comparing something that was built many years ago to something that would be built today under...
Building standards are completely different than then and now. I mean, I don't think you can really make a comparison, you know, between the two.
Right.
I'm just asking a question.
The current, yeah, the current California building code will have much different standards than anything built under previous building codes, and the more old codes you go back, the less direct comparison we can get to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, page nine, anything else? Page 10?
Yeah, I have some questions. So, that first paragraph, the last sentence, says, "With adherence to applicable building codes and Title 27 regulations, in addition to implementation of the aforementioned mitigation measures, the EIR concluded that seismic-related impacts, including liquefaction, would be less than significant." So we've had UPCs, Geotech I's say, not that significant. We've had information in the ER saying that it is significant. Is it that it's significant because of the site itself, but if you apply the proper building standards, that then that reduces the significance of liquefaction causing damage?
There's a couple of different things. One is, the EIR and its map on liquefaction hazard is based on mapping of general conditions that lead to liquefaction, sandy soil, high water table, and there is a, the combination leads to a high potential for liquefaction. Then you get to, some of the testimony that you heard was relating to site-specific conditions under the landfill, and if you remember, he also said, he was only talking about the landfill. about the landfill. But you do have the whole concept of design to California Building Code mitigating impacts and assuring safety of buildings even if liquefaction would occur, because the design of those buildings is based on site-specific soil conditions and what is going on with foundation, how you would design it so you don't get, you know, the classic pictures of liquefaction from, I can't remember what earthquake it was in Japan where you had buildings sitting, sitting on their side because they just sank in the mud. That would not occur under, under current building code.
Okay. Okay. And that's just because of the building code that is in place here in California as opposed to what was in Japan at the time of the building?
Yeah, many years ago. It's not just California's better than Japanese standards, because in terms of seismic risk in some ways, it's way ahead. But we're comparing, in that case, old design, technology, old standards to current standards, and that's a very difficult comparison.
Okay. You know, at the bottom of page 10, it says identified brownfield projects in California where sites could not achieve cleanup goals for approved land uses. In the last part of the second sentence, it says, through the scientifically defensible method of human health risk assessment, the city can choose to limit the land use of the site to commercial, industrial, or other. So, if we were to move forward with a non-residential type of development, we would have to back up scientifically why, you know, we wouldn't allow it. I mean, I'm trying to understand that, that part there.
Remember, the first part of the sentence is, should the city decide remediation of the site has not achieved cleanup goals protective of human health? And the process that you've talked about, the process that is suggested in the sustainability framework, is that the city would retain a third-party consultant who would review studies going to the regulatory agencies, comments by the regulatory agencies, and then reviewing and commenting on the ultimate plan and the ultimate approval. As laid out in the sustainability framework, if the city does not agree with the outcome of that process, what the sustainability framework says is you would negotiate, essentially try to reach a negotiated agreement between city, developer, and regulatory agency. So, that would be the, you know, can't we all come to agreement on this? And if that, if there still was an agreement and the city was then concerned that the approval was not protective of health, that is where you would need to come up with some scientific evidence, which would essentially be your third-party consultant's arguments as to why it wasn't protective. But remember, you retain land use authority throughout that regulatory review process on remediation and landfill closure.
But if a lesser use or an industrial use was already chosen for that site, that wouldn't necessarily be an issue. It would just be that the regulatory agency would say, we've met this threshold for industrial use or residential, and if they made that, then we would, if we felt it wasn't, we would have to make that argument, not for a land use that was already decided and they met those standards.
Correct, yeah. If, if you were in agreement as a city and your third-party reviewer brought, you know, brought the city along and you were all in agreement, that the appropriate standards have been met for the land uses agreed to by the city, then there wouldn't be an issue. This would only come up in the case that the city and its reviewer and its third-party consultant say, we don't agree with the outcome of that regulatory process. And if you agree with the outcome of the regulatory process, it moves forward.
Okay, so, I'm gonna get right to the housing question then. So, if, you know, so the developers put forth their proposal for housing, the lead agency says, you know, and UPC conforms to what the lead agency requires, our consultant working with the city have, would like to see something that has got a more stringent standard, we back it up with science, the city is not obligated to move forward with housing at, in remediating it at that site, we could require a higher standard or not allow these to happen.
I'll start the answer, then ask the city attorney to take over. I would not put it from the standpoint of, we choose a higher standard. The real, the question as laid out in the sustainability framework is, and in the way we had anticipated the answer here, is, is the outcome of the process protective of public health? That's really the question that you would have, and would the land use approved by the city be safe based on the regulatory review process, the regulatory agency's approval, and the city's third-party independent review of that process and the outcome? So, but I think to reject the outcome of the process, the regulatory review process, one, you would first, based on that framework, try to negotiate a solution-
Let me take that back. I'm just talking about just that one use. So, in keeping it at uses. So, if there was a scientific method, standard that we had worked out with our consultant, I'm gonna use housing. So, if our third-party consultant said, you know, you should apply these other standards as well, you know, with the Cal EPA standards, if you're going to move forward with housing. And then the city could say, yes, okay, well, that's the thing to go with. We might not move forward with that use unless these standards are met.
I would not say these standards and we want to apply these standards.
Okay.
The way that I would word that and the way I conceive this is, the response would be, the city would make a decision, or the city would, through its independent review, come to a conclusion, does the outcome of the regulatory review process protect public health? And if you had scientific reasoning to say that it does not, would not be protective of public health, then, and this is where I'll turn it over to the city attorney, you would not be obligated to approve the land use based on your review and your determination that the outcome was not protective.
Okay, all right, okay, no, I get it. Yeah, so it could be to move forward with a higher standard or not to move forward at all, if you had this scientific standard that was recommended by the consultant and the council agreed to it. Okay.
Did the city attorney want to add to that?
No, I think, I think it's been accurately characterized, and again, if the, if the council had approved a particular land use, and then through this process, it was determined that the site could not be remediated to the point where it was safe for public health for that particular land use, and that decision was based on a scientifically-based determination, the council would have discretion to say, no, we're not going to proceed with that particular land use, we have to go to some other land use that the, that is defensible with respect to not being detrimental to the public health.
Okay. Makes sense. Okay, anything else on page 10? 11?
I have one question on the very bottom of page 11.
Okay.
The last bullet point, there's something called a combined program and liability buyouts. Such programs can be structured to provide buyers and/or sellers with long-term buyout of environmental liabilities. When the landowner purchased the property, he bought into the long-term environmental liabilities, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think staff or the city can answer for what the landowner understood he was buying into or not buying into at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on 11?
No. Yeah, I do have a question. So, the Sacramento rail yards project, I didn't see it in Dr. Lee's resume. I believe that he did work on that project in some capacity. I don't know. Okay. Okay, all right.
Anything else on 12?
No.
I had one quick question for, on the very bottom of page 12. The regional water control quality board has required landfills to report, and they call that a WDRS. And I'm wondering when the last, what WDRS was filed on our landfill.
We'll have to look into that, ma'am. I don't know when the last waste discharge report summary was filed.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on 12? 13?
I have one on 13. My question is on, is question 23, so it carries over to the next page. So, I really just wanted to get a good sense about how long it would take us to get certain places. So, for example, to the freeway. And I just, this just wasn't, the way that the information was laid out was just not super helpful to me to get a sense for how it would, how that route would change, because it just, it looks at, it looks at intersections, but I feel like it doesn't really take into account also the time it takes you to get to that intersection in the first place. So, what I'm really trying to determine is just simply, how long does it take on average for us to get there now, you know, during rush hour, morning, afternoon, and then other random times? And then what we can expect at full build-out of this project and then the other projects in the area, you know, how is that gonna change? Are we, are we looking at a five-minute delay? Are we looking at 20 minutes? I just, I think it's also really important for the public, because we talk a lot about how traffic's gonna be the worst, and it's gonna take us forever to get places, and I really want to know, I want to quantify, what is that new reality going to look like?
Yeah, to get, to get that information, what we would end up, what we would have to do is measure not only delay at intersections, which was the information that was readily available to us, but we'd also have to look at, what is the change in speed on the roadway lengths between the intersections? And that would take redoing traffic model runs, so that's, you know, a, at least several week effort to get a change in that. I think, you know, one of the things you could look at is, you know, pick any route, look at how many intersections you have to go through, and start adding up additional delay at the intersections, and you can pretty well figure that maybe whatever percentage increase, half of that. So, if the intersections are increasing 100%, your roadway lengths will increase maybe 50%. It's really a rough measure, but without going back and rerunning changes in traffic speeds along the roadway lengths, you can't really get to a point-to-point change in time.
And I think this really like harkens back to what we discussed earlier. You know, if we don't foresee a build-out with housing, it may not, it may be nice to know, but it may not, it may not be a good use of time to go back and do all of that work. But let's say that that is something that is incorporated, these are things that I'd like to have more concrete idea, I would like to have a more concrete idea, and I'd like to know, you know, for some reason that the council settles on a different amount of units, maybe it's not the full amount, but how those would fluctuate if, you know, having 1,000 versus 4,400 units would impact the amount of times that you're seeing getting to places, or if that amount of people wouldn't make a huge difference in the grand scheme of things. I find that hard to believe, but, you know, if we're getting to that place where that's what the council wishes in terms of land use, I want to say right now that that's something that I would like to happen, because I just think it's important to have, that'll be a little bit more clear.
So, to add on your question, just to clarify also, this, this data is looking at not just the projected baylands development, but it also includes the surrounding projected development in San Francisco and Daly City. Is that what that, it says that on the bottom of page 13? Can you?
Yes, and what you're looking at in the table is, future average weight would be all the cumulative projects without the baylands, then the last column would add the baylands to that. And if you gave us a couple routes, sample routes-
Sure.
-we could, we could take a look and do a rough estimate maybe of change in vehicle speeds, because the other thing that we would have to look at is, where some intersections may take a full minute to get through, how long does it back up?
Well, you also may not be going the same route, that's the other thing, to make matters more confusing, the route may change, like you may not be driving down tunnel anymore, you know, or you may be getting on the Geneva extension. So, it, it may not even make sense to do the routes that we have right now, because things may be added, but I think it's important to just try and look at a few different routes, and I know it's, it could be difficult to project that far in the future, but I'd just like to have a sense, because the community is really concerned about traffic, and I'd like to have a sense for how this would impact us getting places.
Yeah, and if you could lay out just a couple origins and destinations, you don't have to give us the route-
Sure.
-we can, we can then figure out in the ultimate case what would be the most optimal route, because the optimal route 20 years from now may not be the same one you would take today.
Right.
That's very typical in traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, not to complicate it more, but the, you know, we've also heard that, you know, the residential component could decrease traffic by allowing people to not have to drive, you know, from as far outside the Bay Area to get to the jobs that are potentially being built in the adjacent communities or at the baylands. So, is there data that would, that would also consider the savings in traffic from residential?
Okay. The simple answer is yes, and you would do that by comparing essentially levels of development with and without housing. That, that concept of less traffic means at any given level of development being equal to each other somehow, a mixed use with housing would generate fewer trips, but you are not going to see, because if you plunk down a major mixed-use development, the amount of traffic in the area doesn't get reduced from, from the existing condition. So, the, the concept of reducing traffic is based on traffic generation of a mixed-use project with housing as compared to a future project without housing. Traffic doesn't go down because you add new development necessarily. There may be instances where that happens, where you put new routes through, widen roadways, but in this case, it's comparisons of with and without housing at any given level of development.
Okay. I mean, I think the argument is that regionally, what we've heard is that regionally, there will be less traffic, because we're going to assume that 10,000 riders, however many more people are going to be getting on public transportation, because you're building near transit. But I think it's, it's easy to understand how many people are gonna be in our area right now, because there have already been commitments that these developments are coming in. But I think it's hard to look, and I could be totally wrong about this, this is just how I'm interpreting it, but if you're talking about like regionally, because we've heard a lot of people talk about the commutes are getting really long regionally, and how building near transit will diminish those commutes, I think it's really hard to say what that impact will be, because we don't know if California or the Bay Area is gonna continue to grow the way that it is. And I think there are gonna be a lot of factors that impact, a lot of factors that impact traffic overall that we can't predict right now, not just, you know, putting a 4,000- 4,000 unit development in the baylands. So, I think it's harder to know regionally what type of impact it'll have. There's so many other things that I think factor into the traffic as a whole. But in our area, it's, you know, just impacted by the development in the area. So, I think it's easy to predict what's going to happen, you know, on Bay Shore and things like that, because we already know what units are going to be added. Because is that what you were asking? Were you asking on a, like, a regional level about traffic?
Yeah, I was asking about if there was data that would, that would also include the impact, if any, on reduction in traffic by building residential? Because it talks only about increasing here in the chart, so I was curious about that. So, I hear what you're saying. Okay. All right. So, we're on page 13. Any questions?
I do have a question on, yeah, and it's back at number 20. And that's, how will the cap be repaired if it eventually fails? And so, in there, it says that repairs to the landfill cap will be required to be made to satisfy action of the regulatory agency. The specific methods used to repair the cap are dependent on the specific issue requiring repair. So, when we're creating the remediation action plan, we will be working with our consultant in creating, or working with us to have the proper monitoring of the site and repairs. So, what I'm getting at is that, you know, if we have this, would we have a third party to kind of oversee, to make sure that repairs that are made are properly done?
I think the simple answer is yes, and I would say one thing differently, and that is, I think you would premise that when we are preparing the remedial action plan, responsibility for the preparation of the remedial action plan and preparation of Title 27 closure plans is with the applicant. So, the city's role in that case would be to do an independent review of what is going back and forth.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Between applicant and regulatory agency. You will not be preparing the plan.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for just making that clear. But we do have oversight. And then, you know, best practices moving forward, I mean, what might be considered best practice today, 20 years from now, would change, and we would just make sure that we are always having the most up-to-date techniques to repair.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I will say that in follow-up, that the BB CAG has been sort of that person, the group that has looked at what the Department of Toxic Substance Control and the developer have done on the Schleglock site. And while they can make inputs, they don't have any regulatory authority. They just have input as a citizens group, just as the city would probably have input, but no authority of what DTSC or the Department of Water Quality, or whoever is doing the remedial action plan and overseeing it would have. We may have input, but the actual enforcement's going to come down to that regulatory agency, I believe.
This is a question from Michael. If our third-party consultant was reviewing the repair plans for the cap, and it wasn't to their satisfac, if they weren't following the letter of the law, I mean, we would have legal action to enforce that, correct?
That's correct. I mean, it's a little bit hard to imagine that our consultant would not, or that the regulatory agency was not following the letter of the law. But assuming that would be the case, I think we would have some recourse with respect to that, to make sure that the applicable standards were employed.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on 13? 14?
I have a follow-up, and I think this is like a Clay question, so maybe somebody wants to jump in, I don't know. But I was interested in the big-league dreams model, and just kind of getting information on that, because I actually had somebody from the community come to me. Oh, there he is. Somebody from the community come to me, thinking that would be a cool use for the baylands. So, I figured I'd just get more information. But another thing that I had thought about, and I think they might have approached the city a while back, is this, I think it's a company out of the UK, and there could be ones out of the US, too. But what they do is they establish outdoor synthetic, it sounds really crazy, but it's super cool, outdoor synthetic snowboarding arenas, I guess. And they put them on college universities. And it's basically all year round, and it uses water in conjunction with a material that they created to allow you to snowboard actually even more safely than if you were on a mountain, and learn how to pick up snowboarding skills a lot quicker than if you were on a mountain. And so, they've seen just like amazing outpour of success, and a lot of people, you know, coming to use that type of facility. And I was wondering if that company still exists, and what type of model they have, like, what that would look like if we wanted to do something more recreationally focused for use at the baylands? You know, where our main focus is having really unique recreation that maybe people come in from out of town for and then stay at a nearby hotel, so that the site is just being used for quick uses. Could you look into that?
You look like you were looking at me.
Yeah, I mean, I started the question, you were gone.
I'm sorry. Apologize for that. Yeah, I mean, I think there's all sorts of different kinds of recreational.
It would be great if there are ideas that, like, there's really, I like to, everyone talks about wanting to think out of the box with the site, and I think it would just be really cool, since recreation is something that is so important to our community, ways that we could incorporate recreation in an interesting way, because there is so much flatland. And a lot of ti, what's happening in San Francisco is that a lot of these recreational opportunities are kind of being chewed up, and there aren't as many places that you can go kick a ball around and, you know, have fun outside. So, it would be great if the baylands could be a place where there's world-class, really unique recreation going on. I just would like to see more examples, because this was the only one that I had thought of. But I'm sure there are other really cool things out there, too.
Look into some other examples.
Okay. Do you know the thing I'm talking about? I think they approached the city a while ago.
That particular one, I'm not, it's not ringing a bell.
It's like a snowboarding, they wanted to do it at the quarry, and we were like, no. But it's like, they do snowboarding.
Okay.
I'll send you, I'll send you the information I have on them.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. I just took that way left, but.
Coming from a former Parks and Recreation Commissioner, I can understand.
That's where my mind is. This is really, this is the things I think about.
Great. Anything else on 14? 15?
Yes, 17. Question 26. So, in one of my previous questions on pile driving, there was talk of quiet pile driving. And so, I'm wondering if the 1,600 feet away decibel level that is of similar intensity to high-volume roadway traffic, if that's with quiet pile driving or normal pile driving, that we're getting that decibel level?
The numbers here are normal pile driving, if you want comparisons to quiet pile driving, which is kind of like jumbo shrimp, but I can come back, we can get numbers on what kinds of reductions. It's still going to be loud, but it would be a lot less loud, and we can get those.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
So, I have one quick question on the same 26 question. And it talked about pile driving being necessary for mid- and high-rise office or hotel structures in later phases of site development. What would you mean by later in the site development? Is that after the homes, or the initial, or after the Geneva overpass went in? At one point, are you calling it later in the development?
This is, and this is based on the proposed specific plan. Basically, after the very first increments of development, you would not have pile driving in the very first increments, but that phasing could change, so I wouldn't commit that pile driving would not occur for some, whatever period of time after the initiation of construction.
So, in the phasing of the developer-sponsored plan, is there anticipation is to do the homes first and the, any office or high-rise or hotels later?
I think I would leave questions of how the developer intends on phasing to the developer. I know there's discussion of moving from one side to the other side, but I think it would be best that that question be directed to the developer on their intended phasing of what uses come before what and relative timing of what happened.
But we're stating an answer to the question that it would be later in the site development, so I think that's making an assumption of what is going to come first, and so I think it's.
Correct.
Relative to our discussions.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it's an assumption based on the EIR, assumption in the EIR that has, and this was one of the issues that led to some of the discussion regarding phasing at the planning commission, that has residential uses coming before some of the large-scale commercial office uses on the east side of the site, where you might have pile driving. There would be an amount of development going before, you'd see the Geneva extension coming up and over with that pile driving to build the overpasses. So, that was the assumption it was based on.
So, at that point, we would want to look at the impacts of the pile driving on whatever development is in the first phase, and what those impacts, and what the mitigation measures would be, not just for residents of Brisbane, but for, or of downtown Brisbane. We would want to look at it on what the effects of the later phases of development would have on the first phases of development.
On the first phases. And one of the recommendations of the planning commission was to request that phasing be laid out in a much more specific manner, not, and when I say specific, based on series of performance standards, so that each increment of development, no matter how small it is, would have appropriate infrastructure, appropriate amenities, and then you would, in the case that you have, also be able to say that the noisier operations, such as pile driving, we would look at not just the impacts on central Brisbane and up in the hills, but if there was residential on the site, what is the, before that pile driving occurred, what are the impacts of the closer-up residential? So, that's the reason that they had requested additional detail in terms of phasing plans, so that those kinds of performance standards could be built into review of individual increments of development.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on 17? 18?
I have an additional question to enter that's not related to any of these. So, what would be the most appropriate time for me to add that in?
You can.
Right now? I have it written down, so.
Is it one question?
Yes, just one question.
Go for it.
So, in this whole series of reading, I was able to take time to read Deb Horn's reports that she submitted, and they were regarding the Stoffer Chemical Company formerly located at 200 Industrial Way. And I was wondering, if, you don't have to do it right now, but if you can speak to what UPCS planned for in that area? Thank you.
We can come back with that specific answer.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on 18? Okay. Now, we'll move on to page 19. This is responses to information requests from Councilmember Lentz.
If we can take a five-minute break, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
Should, thank you.
Five-minute break. Thank you.